That's Bill Enfield right there. Mr. Dice?
Good morning, Commissioners, good morning, Mr. Chairman. We have several items on the agenda this morning. The first one is a request that the Board approve the State Housing Initiative Partnership, the SHIP program, and your report covering years 2010, 11, 2012, and 13, and sign the two certifications. If any questions, I think Mr. Carpenter's here, he can answer your questions.
Any questions?
Motion.
Our motion second, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries.
Chairman, the next item has two parts, A and B. And what we're doing, we are initiating, we are requesting the initiation of an amendment process for both of these. I anticipate this would include a workshop prior to the Planning Commission, just to take comments from the public and tweak it a little bit. We don't, at this point in time, we've had some draft areas we're working on. But A is amending, ordinance amending, the land uses in the LDC. Right now, we have some things that are inconsistent with the comp plan. This amendment would be to bring those into compliance with the comp plan. We have some uses that are in the comp plan but not in the Land Development Code, some land use districts. What we are trying to do is bring those into compliance to make sure that the comp plan and the Land Development Code are consistent with one another. And that's what this process is. Again, this is a starting point for us, workshops, and obviously the required public hearings.
Mr. Rice, would you take the old language and the new language so I can understand where the conflict is?
We sure can.
Thank you.
We sure can, Mr. Chapman, and we'll be glad to, I can come by and kind of show it to you and go over with you.
And I noticed there's nothing in here, so you're going to get us?
Yes, ma'am. Right now, we have a draft, we have an ordinance, but since we're kind of in this process initially, it will likely change. And so, we'll be glad, if you want, we'd be glad to give it to all the Commissioners if you want to see that in this draft format right now. And on, moving on to part B, comprehensive plan, mixed-use acreage criteria ordinance. Currently in the comp plan, we have some language that requires mixed use. And it requires mixed use regardless of size of the property. And so, what we found is, we have some partial sizes that are very, very small that probably couldn't accommodate mixed use. And if it could, it'd be very, possibly disruptive to the neighborhood and locations of these areas. And so, what we're asking to do is, our proposal is to set a threshold. If it's above five acres, keep the required mixed-use component. If it's below five acres, then remove the mandatory language for mixed use. And that's essentially what that does. Again, this is very preliminary stages, just getting permission to move forward with this. We'll likely have workshops and, of course, the public hearings with this as well.
No, we just, just to make sure you have, he has direction to go forward with it.
Yeah, right, yeah. Thank you. Number three on the agenda under legislative items, it's the US 98 331 scenic corridor outdoor display ordinance. We're requesting to remove this from the agenda to allow for some further workshops and discussions. Right now, we're, it's with the Planning Commission at this point still. We've had a lot of comments back and forth, and we've been working together with both parties, trying to reach a solution that I think everyone can be happy with. And so, we're requesting, again, to remove this item from the agenda. We'll bring it back at a further date once we get that firmed up and something that we can present, and it also has the recognition of the Planning Commission.
So moved.
Our motion second, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, the next items are QJ items.
Yes, anyone anticipating testifying or speaking to the Board regarding any item on the agenda for a quasi-judicial hearing, would you please stand and raise your right hand and let me swear you in? Do each of you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give before this Board will be the truth. Thank you. Commissioners, have any of you had any ex parte contacts with anyone regarding any item that's about to be before this Board? And if so, if you could disclose those and tell me if it would in any way impair your ability to make a decision, a fair and impartial decision today. Hearing none.
Mr. Chairman, we have several tabling and continuance requests. Shall I do those first or as we go through the agenda, Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman, we have several items that are requested to be tabled or continued. Shall I do those now or as we go through?
Let's do those first, if anybody's here.
You want to do those, I'm sorry, do them now?
Let's do it now.
Okay. Number seven on your agenda is the Winter Garden at Watersound Phase III Platte. This is a request to table this item, to re-advertise, to allow the applicants additional time to obtain all the required signatures for the platte.
Our motion second, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries.
Wayne, this was at the request of the applicant.
That's right, absolutely, yeah. They're having, I think they're having trouble gaining the signatures, and they can't be brought forward until the signatures are all received. Number eight, Winter Garden at Watersound Phase IV Platte, same issue, request to table and re-advertise.
Our motion, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries.
Number nine is the Dollar General. This one is still with the DRB. There's still meeting with them, and therefore, we have not brought it to the Planning Commission. And so, we're requesting that this be tabled and re-advertised. This may take a while. There's been several meetings with the DRB, and I anticipate maybe possibly further meetings with the Planning Commission as well. Instead of continuing, we just want to request this be tabled, and we'll re-advertise it and bring it forward at the appropriate time.
Our motion second, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, the last one is number 10, Old Seagrove Beach, also known as, formerly known as Old Seagrove Village. They are still responding to our comments, and we request that this be continued until the September 10, 2013 meeting.
Our motion second, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, that brings us to number four under QJ items. It's a Blackshear small-scale amendment. If I could, I'll ask Renee Bradley to give you a brief overview of this project or this request.
This is small-scale amendment number 2013-11. Emerald Coast Associates and Murray Blackshear requesting a small-scale amendment of 1.15 acres from residential preservation to low-density residential. The site is located on Seaward Drive at the southeastern corner of Seaward Drive and identified by parcel number 023-South20341600000700. I've entered into the record a position statement of the Sunrise Beach Homeowners Association and the applicant's response to that, which I believe was forwarded to this Board.
And Renee, I'm sorry, I failed to do this. Is any objections to the notice of this hearing? Hearing none. Miss, madam, have the notice moved in as an exhibit one, and the staff report is exhibit two? Thank you, Renee, I'm sorry.
Thank you. This proposed amendment does meet the criteria for low-density residential land use for the following reasons. This project does meet the location criteria because projects serve with public water and sewer. The low-density residential land use may be employed to address compatibility concerns between lower and high-density land use categories where served by public water and sewer. The project is compatible to the properties adjacent to the east and west of this parcel because the adjacent properties are approximately one-third in acreage in size. Properties to the north range from 0.10 to 0.15 acres. The applicant's requesting a maximum of three lots to be subdivided from this property. Clustering is encouraged and may be required to protect significant habitat and wetlands and to avoid other areas of environmental concerns. The applicant will be required to cluster outside the floodplain area. This proposed amendment would offer a consistent pattern of future development. The surrounding land uses are single-family. The request is compatible with the request of a three-lot subdivision. At the development stage of the project, the applicant will be required to meet all the Land Development Code requirements and comp plan policies, including policy L 1.13.2. Policy L 1.13.2 states proposed amendments to the future land use map that increase the density of development allowed in a floodplain are discouraged. Walton County may approve such amendments if the developer agrees to enter into a development agreement with the county to transfer density outside of the floodplain portions of the property. Record permanent development restrictions on the floodplain portions of the site and utilize other land development requirements to protect the flood storage capacity of the property and protect the safety, health, and welfare of county residents. Staff has received public opposition in reference to design and height of future buildings as well as to whether access is available through the roadways of Sunset Subdivision. At the May 9, 2013 meeting, the Planning Commission recommended approval with six votes in favor and one vote nay. Staff finds this amendment meets the Land Development Code and Comprehensive Plan unless other evidence is given to the contrary, and recommends approval of this small-scale amendment. Can I answer any questions for the Board?
I guess I do have, and I read the petition that was submitted to us yesterday, I tried to get through it. If they don't, the only way into that property is through a gated community, and they don't have, I mean, and they don't have permission to use that gate, I mean, how are they going to access their property?
And that is a civil issue, and I would, if you would, I'd let you address that to the applicant, because I can't get into the civil issue of that access.
Well, can we vote on something and determine if there's a civil issue out there and it's going to be, go to court?
I have, I want to make sure we're clear.
Yeah.
If there is an issue regarding the availability of access over a granted easement, we don't pass on that. All we can pass on is whether or not this project meets the Land Development Code and the Comprehensive Plan. But it's certainly a fair question for you to ask the applicant, what are his plans?
How did this parcel get left out? It's planted all around it. How did it get left out?
I don't know.
Dean, come on up, Dean.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is it appropriate, did anybody have other questions for Renee outside of this access question? Okay.
My question was, how did it get left out from being planted, Dean? Did not one person on that parcel planted after, before, or?
The parcel that's before you here today was left out of the platte because the owner at the time was also the developer of Sunrise Subdivision. And they intentionally left that parcel out for their parcel out of the platte. They did give themselves access into the property through the roads of Sunrise. So, the claim that we don't have access is incorrect. We actually, I agree with what Mark, you know, stated, is that for a change in land use, I don't believe that a review of access is pertinent. However, I did want to at least cover it to where the Board has a level of comfort that we do have a legal right to access the property. We are prepared to put on a full discussion of access. I just think it's not appropriate for this particular request.
Well, they have access now, don't they?
They do have access now.
You could take that as access, right?
There were two residential homes on the property in question. They accessed through Sunrise Subdivision. The Sunrise never put up a gate or blocked off access. If they really felt that they had the right to do that, I think they would have. But if you'd like, Mr. Lee Steerman is here, if you'd like to hear, you know, our response to the access issue, we're prepared to discuss that today. I just don't think it's part of this.
You've got access, and you've got homes on it, and you've been using that access road. I mean, you've got rights to that, to go through that, you know, to get that property.
We certainly believe so.
And you can't take that right away from somebody just because they're doing something else with the land.
And I don't know that our response to the objection was received by this Board. I'd be happy to pass it out. But there are three recorded easements in the public records, duly recorded in the public records, granting access to this property through Sunrise Subdivision.
Can I answer this question?
I would, I just, we have some questions.
I'd be happy to pass those out if you.
Well, Dean, are you asking that this be made an exhibit? It is not part of the record.
If we're going to entertain this discussion, we'll go ahead and make it.
It would be marked as applicant's exhibit one, just to add it to it.
Thank you, sir.
While you're passing, I got a quick question. I think you just said there's residences on the parcel?
Yes, sir.
But in the very front, this says this is a 1.15 acres of vacant land.
There were two homes when Mr. Blackshear bought the property. They were in ill repair, and he removed the homes. He demolished those shortly after he purchased the property. But on the county tax rolls, you can go back and see where there were two residents on the property, just a matter of a few years ago.
Yeah, I'm looking at an aerial that's in here now, that it's dated March of this year, and it looks like there's, so it's been since March that it's been cleared?
Yes, I believe so. I don't know the exact date that he removed the homes. Mr. Blackshear's not here to answer that, but I do know when he purchased the property. Shortly thereafter, he removed the homes from the property.
Yes, I just have a couple of questions about the, yeah, the maps and such. Let's see. This map that's in our, are you familiar with that?
Yes, that's our survey.
Boundary and type, yeah. The property on these maps look like, looks like it's, well, I can't, what is the, what is that on the, on that side? It looks like it has a driveway to it to the north. Is that part of the property, or is that another lot?
Here on the east side.
Yeah.
That is also owned by Mr. Blackshear.
Okay. It's not part of this amendment, and he, and it does have a driveway through some other.
Shellseekers Cove.
Shellseekers Cove. So, he's got, so, why wouldn't he want to just add this on to Shellseekers Cove?
There is the potential that he could access it through Shellseekers. He has granted easement rights through Sunrise, and he very well may access this property through Shellseekers, which is a public road.
Okay. And how much, how much frontage does he have on the Sunrise Road? How much frontage is there?
It's in the curve of the road.
Yeah. How big is it? Because I guess my question is, yeah, it's in the curve of the road.
There's rough, well, I'm estimating about 40 feet.
Forty feet. So, he's going to platte three more lots in here, you say? He's going to put?
There would be a maximum of three.
Maximum of three. So, how are they going to get access to it? And I guess this is a question for planning, don't we have a minimum, a lot has to have a minimum frontage on a platted right-of-way?
Now, to the best of my knowledge, there's not a minimum lot size or width.
Not lot size or width, but a minimum frontage on a right-of-way.
I'm not aware of any minimum, Matt, Renee? I don't.
No, some places say that you have to have a minimum of 25 feet on a platted right-of-way, you know, in order for it to, and if you're going to do three lots here, I'm just wondering how you're going to get.
Right. Yes, ma'am, there's many communities that have minimum frontage on streets, and also have minimum lot sizes as well. We don't have that at this current time, but, Matt, can you?
A 20-foot minimum, Matt, Chad, for emergency vehicles is the least amount.
Twenty-foot minimum?
Let me stop everybody. One of the things we have today, of course, as a court reporter, it's almost impossible for her, if two people are talking at the same time, it drives her.
And I don't know who any.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, you need to start saying your names when you speak.
Okay. Okay, okay. Matt, you were saying?
Matt Carpenter for the Planning Department. The minimum access requirement would be 20 feet for emergency vehicles. In this particular case, they're probably going to have to have some kind of service road coming off of their access of that road if they come off of that subdivision street to serve the other two lots.
To serve the other two lots, okay. And then, my last question.
Sort of similar to what they had when there were two houses there.
Okay. And my last question would be, and I'm Cindy, Cindy Meadows, there's my name. My last question would be, how, what is the triangle, are these lots platted down to the mean high water? And what is that, what is that big blue triangle that's, that's south of the lot?
The blue triangle shows up, and again, Dean Burgess with Emerald Coast Associates, I guess I should back up. I'm the applicant's agent and representative of the application. The blue triangle shows up on the property appraisers' map as, I believe, public beach or county beach. However, the description that we have, you'll notice in our boundary topographic survey goes to the water. So, there is a discrepancy between those two.
Okay, okay. And that, I guess, is what I was wondering, because reviewing plattes in different areas, I am finding that a lot of these plattes are being approved, and lots are being planted over public beach. And that, to me, is a problem. And I don't know if that's the case here, but it certainly kind of looks like it is.
And that would be clarified. All Walton County project submittals require title policies and review of the title policy by the registered surveyor. And I would say that would be one of the, if it's not clarified in our submittal, it would be a comment from staff.
Yeah, and it should be, because I think what's happening is, basically, they're just planting over public beach areas, and I'm not sure that the title companies are catching it. I'm not, I don't, I haven't looked into it enough to know that. But, yeah, these maps, you know, don't show what you're showing on your boundary type of. But anyway, nevertheless, the adjacent, the lots in Sunrise that are to the west of this, what is their, it looks like they're all the same width. What is their width and depth? Do you?
It appears they are roughly, of course, they vary to some degree, 50 feet, and the Gulffront lots are obviously larger.
Right. And they're about 200 feet. So, your three lots would be about the same size? Is that what you're saying?
That's correct. And again, we very well may just do two lots.
Okay.
For a land use application, we're required to base our traffic analysis and our.
So, you did it on three?
Entire submittal on the maximum build-out density.
Okay.
I honestly believe that there, more than likely, we'll come in with just two lots.
Okay. And would they, is there, is there a homeowners' association at Sunrise?
There is.
Would they have to be a member of it, or?
I think that parcel is excluded. The way this would be done, it could be done two ways. They could either be brought into the platte for Sunrise if that were negotiated between the owners and the homeowners' association.
Right.
Or it would be a standalone platted subdivision, separate and apart from Sunrise.
Okay. And then, just able to be accessed through, don't they have a gate there? Don't they have a?
There is a gate.
An arm gate?
Yes, ma'am.
So, that would have to be worked out between everybody?
Right.
Well, you know, since they're going to be the same size as the beachfront lots that are adjacent, and if you can work out the access issues and the issue about plating over public beach, you know, they're going to be like kind as to the ones to the west of them. The ones to the north of them, no, because they're not beachfront lots, so, and I did get some letters from people in there who said that, you know, they didn't, didn't want this to go through, but when you look at the platte of the existing lots, they're pretty much all the same size. What, who owns those two that are, that are not included to the west?
I don't know who the owners are of those lots.
So, you have two other lots in here that weren't included in the original platte?
There are also two other lots that are not included in the original platte. They also access through the gate and through those roads.
Okay. Okay.
With similar recorded easement documents.
Yeah, okay. And, okay. Is there a private drive from Lot 8 into the east? I know that really doesn't have anything to do with your platte, but it looks like there's a private drive that connects into the east.
There is a private drive between Lot 8 and 9.
Okay. And that connects into his current residence.
It does connect to his current residential lot. He also, Mr. Blackshear also does own Lot 8.
He does own Lot 8 as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
If I may, I'd go ahead and give you some more information on our application very briefly. The property that's here before you tonight is currently assigned to land use category of residential preservation, which is reserved for platted subdivisions. Of course, it was excluded from the platte. So, that brought rise to this particular amendment request. If Mr. Blackshear couldn't even do a lot split, because lot splits are frowned upon and not promoted within residential preservation. Furthermore, residential preservation, because he does not meet the criteria of the land use category, is not appropriate for the property, so we sought an appropriate land use category. Low-density residential specifically excludes any potential for multifamily development, commercial development, other developments that may be of concern. It's specifically designed for low-density, a maximum of four units per acre residential, single-family residential development, which is the intent here. It also is specifically called out by the Comprehensive Plan to mitigate compatibility concerns and issues, and that was another reason for opting for that particular land use category. If there are any questions the Board may have, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any other questions?
Just real quick, I noticed on the, on the property appraisers' printout, it shows the acreage to be .613, and at the front, we're talking about 1.15. What's, what's the difference?
The actual property before you today measures 0.8. The difference between the 1.15, I believe, includes that Lot 8 within the subdivision. We surveyed all of the property that Mr. Blackshear owns, including Lot 8. If you subtract that out, you get 0.8 acres. The .2 acre discrepancy between the property appraisers' map and the .8 acres that we're stating is probably that public land that Ms. Meadows was referring to.
So, the density, then, is to be considered on the .8 acres?
Right. .8 times four would be 3.2 units. You round down to three, a maximum of three units.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dean.
All right, thank you.
Any public comments? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is John Connell. I'm an attorney with Becker &amp; Pollyakoff, and I represent the Sunrise Beach Homeowners' Association. We oppose this reclassification at this time, and I want to address the access issue and be sure that, that all of you understand our position about that and answer any questions you may have. And I have some slides. I have some slides I think will help explain our position on this access question.
I wonder where he's from.
Okay, is that, can I move this up? Okay. What you, what you have before you now is, is an aerial photograph of the Sunrise Beach subdivision and the subject property, which is marked with a, with a note that says "site." That's, that's the Blackshear property. You see three streets that run, actually, they run north and south, they're running left and right on what you're looking at. Sundown Court, Daybreak Court. Now, we've turned it around so that now you're looking north. The, there's only one way in to Sunrise Beach, which is along Seaward Drive, which is the street that runs north directly out of the, the subject property. That is, there's a gate there. That is the only way in and out of this, of this subdivision. The, could we go to the second slide now that I brought? We don't question that Mr. Blackshear has an easement to come through the gate, to come over Seaward Drive and access his property. That, that's never been an issue. He's got a recorded easement. The developer retained easements, and they went with the land, and so, he has that right. What we're concerned about is if the property is reclassified so that it can be subdivided into as many as three lots, we don't know what's going to go on those lots. There is no requirement, there will be no requirement, and we will have no way to enforce any requirement about what is built, because those lots are outside of the subdivision. They aren't subject to our architectural standards and requirements. So, that he could build. So that he could build big houses, mega-houses, even duplexes. He could use those as vacation rental properties. And the traffic over the easement, it's easy to see how, if that happened, the traffic could increase tenfold over what it is now. Now, originally, when this easement was created, there was one small, single-family dwelling on the subject property that was occupied. And there was an even smaller dwelling that was occasionally used as a rental. So that's what was there when the easement was created. Now, Florida law... And I know we're not going to get into making decisions about law, but it's important to understand that. I think our position is, Florida law is that when you create an easement, that the scope of the easement is measured by what the parties intended when it was created. There is nothing in any of these easements that indicates an intent ever to subdivide this property served by the easement and to build multiple homes on it or other structures. So there is a principle of law that you can overburden an easement. Mr. Blackshear's got the right to get back to and from that property. We don't question that. Possibly, depending on what he develops, he may overburden the easement, and that is a concern. Now, the way... If we look at the slide that's up now, you see Seward Drive running south toward the subject property. The way this easement has always operated, the way that property has been accessed, is you come down Seward, you take a left at what's marked as a 10-foot easement. That easement is actually planted on the Sunrise Beach plat. You come down that easement, and then you go to the right and cross over Lot 8, which Mr. Blackshear owns, and you get to the property that way. Now, that's his only easement to and from that property. That's what he's got, and that's how he gets in and out. There has been discussion that he might come down Shellseekers, which is the road to the east, somehow come through the backside of Lot 8 and access the property that way. That's something we're willing to consider and discuss with him, but we don't want any access through Lot 8 to open up the subdivision so that it is no longer gated and you can access all of the streets via Shellseekers. The lots are for residential use as per the declaration. To use one as a right-of-way, we contend would require the association to approve it because suddenly you're no longer using it for residential purposes. So the two ways, the two conceivable feasible ways to get to this property, if it's going to be subdivided, both have an impact on Sunrise Beach. Either potentially the traffic over the existing easement could be greatly increased, or you could create a new entrance into the subdivision through Lot 8. So that's our concern. Now, we have attempted to work this out, and I want the board to know, we've met with Mr. Blackshear two times, had lengthy conversations. We've expressed our concerns, and we've asked, how do you want to develop it? And more importantly, how will you access this property if this reclassification is granted? And to date, we have no answer. We don't know what his plans are for accessing if the reclassification is granted. And we don't know what might eventually go there and how it will affect Sunrise Beach. Now, under the Walton Land Use Code, it is the applicant's burden to demonstrate that the land use reclassification, that there's a need for it. Now, we don't have any evidence of any need at this time to reclassify this property. We're willing to continue to negotiate with Mr. Blackshear and his representatives about what is going to go there. And when there becomes a need to reclassify, we may very well be able to reach an agreement. But at this time, there's been no demonstrated need. Secondly, in any evaluation of a request to alter the land use map, it's supposed to ensure that the proposed amendment is compatible with surrounding land use. And a reclassification that would dramatically increase traffic over a private right-of-way, private easement, or that would entail coming into a subdivision through a new entrance is not compatible with current land use. It's not compatible with Sunrise Beach as it exists today. And those issues need to be sorted out. It is not our intent to say to the owner of this property, you can never develop it. We want to work with him, but he has not given us any information about either, A, how he will access the property, if land use reclassification is granted, or B, what is going in there and how might whatever goes in there impact the flow of traffic over our streets. Want to just briefly correct a couple of things in their position statement that they filed recently, yesterday. We aren't trying to impose any architectural requirements on Mr. Blackshear. There are very strict requirements in Sunrise Beach. We have offered to talk to him about annexing that property into the subdivision, which would make him subject to those requirements. He does not appear to be interested in that, and that's fine. I mean, that's not anything we've insisted on. We've offered it as an option. We would like, if he's going to use our streets, if that's ultimately how this pans out, we do want to discuss with him some method of paying a reasonable amount for the maintenance of the streets, because they're private and the homeowners' association, you know, maintains those streets. So, again, we're amenable to further discussions. We think it's premature to reclassify at this time with all of the questions about access and then what is going there. I know access is not normally an issue, but normally, you're talking about access to a public right-of-way. This is a unique situation. You're talking about access over a private easement, essentially, that is the homeowners' association's. And therefore, I think it is important to consider it at this stage. The Planning Commission did not consider access at all. They refused to even delve into that. I think, you know, you have some options here. We would like you to deny it at this time, give us more opportunity to work out an arrangement. I think you could, if you wanted, refer it back to the Planning Commission and ask them to reconsider it and direct them to consider access issues and how access is going to impact Sunrise Beach and whether it's compatible. And I thank you for your attention, and I'll answer any questions that any of you have.
Any questions?
How long have you all been in negotiations with the owner of the...
We began discussions with him after the Planning Commission met.
Well, that was just recently, then?
Yes, sir. We've met with him twice. Once by telephone, once at his representative's office. I was present. Some other board members were present by telephone at that conference. So we've had two meetings.
Okay. The subject property and Lot 8 were not included in the original plat. He separated them out, correct?
Lot 8 is in the plat.
It is in the plat.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
The subject property was not.
Does he live in the house next to the east? Does he live there? Does Mr. Blackshear live in the house to the east that he's...
He has a house that is to the east.
Yeah, I just want...
No, I don't know that he lives there full-time.
Dean, can I speak?
It's a second home for him. It's not his homesteaded permanent residence.
State your name there, Dean.
All right. Dean Burgess with Emerald Coast Associates.
Okay. And my other question is, you mentioned, you know, the idea that these might be rentals. Are there rentals allowed in Sunrise Beach?
There are.
There are already rental houses?
There are, but the houses are of a certain size. And we don't necessarily object to there being rentals on the subject property. What we would object to and what we're afraid of is big, enormous houses that would accommodate, you know, multiple people.
Do y'all have any restrictions on... Do you have a maximum house size in your architecture?
Yes, ma'am. There are... Sunrise Beach has some very intricate and detailed architectural restrictions that anyone must meet.
Do they include a maximum building area, square footage?
They do. I don't know what that is.
You know what that is?
I don't know what that is, but they do.
Okay.
Mr... Yeah. I'm sorry. Rain dead. Aren't we looking at trying to get a parking ordinance done so that you can't build another monster house without having the appropriate parking, which might limit, again, limit the use of this piece of property?
For the record, Wayne Dias with Walton County Planning. Yes, Commissioner Commander, we are. That is going through the process. As you're all aware, there is a parking problem. We have these large homes that, when they're permitted, they have, for example, three bedrooms with a media room with maybe an office or something like that. Those media rooms and offices get converted into bunk rooms or bedrooms, and the parking was calculated off of the three bedrooms. Currently, the parking is based on bedrooms. What we are proposing is to move an ordinance forward where parking is based on the square footage of the home. This has been in place for many years in Greaton Beach, and it seems to work very well there. And so what we are proposing is to mimic the language in Greaton Beach neighborhood plan, put in the parking standards throughout Walton County. So it would be, again, based on the total square footage, not just on the bedrooms.
Okay. How close are we to that? Because I believe I share their concerns about a... I call them monster houses going up, and there not being parking. And I'm very sensitive to easement issues because I have one. So I'm concerned about building a large house or two and there being no parking at the end of the street and it clogging the street. I mean, how close are we to that parking?
Well, we intended to move it forward very quickly. We got a lot of... Not a lot. We got some comments and some suggestions back from the public. And what we've decided to do, instead of having it go to the Planning Commission in September, we are going to be holding a workshop and just take public comments from the workshop, and it will likely be October, Planning Commission, and then after that, soon thereafter, bring it to the board. So, you know, October, November timeframe, it should be before you all to review and approve or deny.
I know Mark's going to tell me the answer is no, because he likes to tell me no. But can we put a condition that there be no building permit, nothing issued until after the parking ordinance is resolved?
None.
That's what I thought she said.
Can I ask... I need an attorney question. Obviously, the developer of Sunrise knew what he was doing, because he left this piece. He left it with a 40-foot access. He still owns Lot 8, and he's got a 10-foot into Lot, and he owns the next to it. So, I mean, you know, he set it up this way. My question to you is, you know, can you force someone who's not part of the subdivision plat to join the subdivision homeowners' association?
No, ma'am.
Okay. And can you deny them access through the 40 feet?
No, ma'am. And with all due respect to Mr. Cottle, whom I have a lot of respect for, let me say a couple of things about that. One, the short answer is no. You could not deny him access.
Okay.
If the applicant comes forward after this small-scale amendment with a development plan that Mr. Cottle has concerns, or his clients have concerns, would overburden the easement, just like he discussed at the beginning of his presentation, then he could obviously go to court and ask the judge to not allow him to use it for that purpose. But just, I just want to be clear with the commission. We can't make that determination. One, it's not right. Two, it's not something that we do as part of our land development process.
Right.
And so, just so you know, he may very well have that argument once they come back in. If they come back in with three monster houses, they're going to have 100 people going through there every weekend. That's a court that's going to have to decide whether that overburdens that easement or not.
Okay. And the other question is... The other question is... Well, I had it on the tip of my tongue.
And I answered two more.
What you're talking about, the monster houses, the issue you're going to have there is parking.
There's going to be a...
I mean, these lots are real small here.
And I was using that, Mr. Commissioner, as an extreme example.
Well, the issues you're going to have to deal with, that parking is going to be a problem.
And they're going to have to... And if that's not an issue, we can tie it to the thing. Oh, I know what I wanted to ask. When they come back through and they replat this or whatever they're going to do, you know, they would just come in with a building permit for the lot. They wouldn't have a development order. So you're suggesting that they could come in when they brought in the development order? I don't think they'll have a... They'll just have three plats?
They would have to go through the development order application process here.
On the three lots?
Yes.
If you have three lots, it'd be a minor development order.
Minor development.
Oh, okay. Okay. But it wouldn't come to the board, and it wouldn't... It would go to staff. It would just be in staff.
Ma'am, it'd be a TRC review.
Would it? It would just be a TRC review, but it would not come to the Planning Commission or the board?
It would not come for the board.
So if you wanted to appeal something, you'd have to appeal it at the TRC level, is what I'm asking.
It's one of those crazy things. Yes, it could go to the... It could be appealed to the Board of Adjustment, and then could be... The request for development order then could be taken to the Circuit Court.
Okay.
Under two scenarios, but yes.
Okay. Okay.
Let me just reiterate. We are not trying to say to Mr. Blackshear, you cannot use this easement. I mean, we've never said that. That's not our position. It's the potential for a sudden huge increase, which would be incompatible with the current usage of Sunrise Beach, which we object to, and which the burden is on him under the Walton County Planning Code to demonstrate that what he does is going to be compatible and that there is a need for it. That's his burden, and I don't think it's been met based on what you've been given today.
Any other questions? Any other public comments?
Mr. Cottle, you had provided... I think it was emailed to the commissioners, but I did not see it in the packet. I assume you want this to be part of the record, which is your response to the staff report.
Is that?
Yes, sir. I think it's yours. John Cottle. I just want to make...
Why did that not? I didn't see it.
It's in my package, so I just wanted to make sure.
I don't know. I don't know.
It was essentially the argument he just made. So with the court's permission, we'll just move this in as objectors exhibit one.
Yeah, I do want...
Well, and you know, land use amendments, we cannot put conditions on them.
That's correct.
And we can't talk about, you know, we can't, you know... He could access it through Shellseekers. He could access it through, you know... If he could get the access through Sunrise. It's really not any different than what's there right now. It's three beachfront lots. Now, I know the houses to the east are a lot bigger, and, yeah, people are building a lot bigger homes these days, but I don't see how we can deny it.
The only way you could be able to deny it is obviously under the land development code would be to make a finding that, just what he argued, or whether or not there's been a statement or a showing of change in conditions that would justify an amendment, why there's a need for the proposed amendment, or whether or not the amendment's consistent with the comprehensive plan. Those are essentially the statements.
Yeah. Yeah. And as far as need, you know, people have a... You know, they can submit an application to do almost anything. It's up to us to decide whether it meets exactly the surrounding area. And on this one, I have to say, it does. I mean, it's three more lots, just like the other ones. And there's also two other lots in this subdivision that are not included, that could build monster homes. So it's not like, you know, this is, you know... It's not like now the owners in the Sunrise, when they bought the... in the Sunrise, when they bought the property, should have been notified of that, but people don't pay attention, of course, to, you know, they don't understand how it could impact them. But I just, I don't see how we could deny it on the fact that there's two other lots in here that are platted.
Those other two lots have now become part of the subdivision. They were initially excluded, correct.
Okay.
But they are now, they've been annexed and they're subject to this, they pay association dues and are subject, excuse me, to the architectural restrictions.
Okay, because on this plat, it says not included, the plat that I have, yeah.
Correct, they were not included in the original plat, but they've been added.
Have they been added to the plat? So the plat's been revised?
I don't know that the plat has been revised, but they are now a part of the subdivision and subject to the declaration.
They'd have to be, the plat would have been revised for them to be a part of the subdivision, correct?
Yes ma'am, come on up to the podium.
To answer your question, they can be made subject to the covenants and restrictions that the subdivision has without necessarily having the plat revised, but it is a better practice to have the plat revised.
Okay, okay, gotcha.
Station, station, come up to the, come up, state your name.
My name is Delise Dearman. I am, I am the owner of Emerald Coast Title Services. Mr. Blackshear contacted me to look at the easements and do an analysis of the properties surrounding him and the easements that go in and out of Sunrise Beach. I also have attended an August the 7th meeting with the Sunrise Association, a few members and Mr. Cottle. I think I can clarify, Ms. Meadows, your question about the two lots that were not included in the plat because that's a unique situation. Those two lots were granted separate easements by the developers of Sunrise and those two lots, those easements had conditions on them that the owner of those lots would join the association, that they would pay dues. There were conditions that were made when the, when those lots were taken out of the plat and then sold by the original developers. That is in direct contrast to the issue that we have with Lot 70, with Mr. Blackshear's parcel, because actually, there were two, there was a quick claim deed given to Mr. Blackshear's parcel as well as two separate grants of easement by the developers of Sunrise Beach that granted him unrestricted access to both the roads in the subdivision as well as the small access area off Shellseekers. Now, those easements were all given prior to any lot owner in the subdivision buying a lot. These lots, these easements and this quick claim deed granting these easements were given, the unconditional easements were given, and they weren't just given to the, to Mr. Blackshear's parcel, they were given to several other parcels of land. Then these owners of those parcels of land have had access rights through Sunrise since 1992. And there's never been a complaint made by Sunrise to those people that had access. I don't know if they're aware of it or not, but these easements were a matter of public record, they were recorded in the Walton County public records prior to anyone ever buying a lot at Sunrise. So they take precedent, you know, they are listed on the title policies, they are listed as exceptions to the lot owner's usage in the subdivision. Now, we also, Ms. Meadows, found in their covenants, they do not have any maximums for square footage at Sunrise. They have minimum square footages. Those minimum square footages are from 950 square feet to 1,350 square feet, depending if it's a one-story, two-story, or three-story home. So there are no maximums and I would say from my, and my office, by the way, I've been doing land records in Walton County for 30 years.
I need to talk to you.
So, and we are real familiar with access easements and issues like that because we deal with them on a regular basis. I would also like to point out to the commission and the fact that initially, the Sunrise Beach developers purchased lots 64, 65, 66, and 67. Those were the lots that were used to plat this subdivision. They, these were all the old US government two-and-a-half acre lots that I think you all are probably familiar with, that were granted by the patents. Now, these lots all had 33-foot easements that ran to the Gulf and these lots all granted other people access to the Gulf. The county commission abandoned those easements at the request of the Sunrise developers and those easements were abandoned in 1991 before the subdivision plat was approved or went on record. So those were done in anticipation. But part of the issue with the easements was that there were also lots that were cut off and they were given access to the roads within the Sunrise Beach subdivision. So frankly, the developers of Sunrise were Harry Carey and they pretty much decided, when they decided they wanted to give someone an access easement, they just granted it. And there are numerous access easements to numerous properties out there besides Mr. Blackshear's.
Okay, one question too, when you said, you know, when they replatted this, that's, that's what I mean, when people are coming in and replating lots of record, they're plating over public beach. It appears like they did that on this one. And that's a whole separate issue, so you don't need to answer anything, but let me ask you this. The big triangle at the bottom of this that, that's, looks like it's public beach, what does your, what does your research show on that?
My research does not show that that's public beach, but now, we have, we were hired to address the access issues, how long they have been there. I have examined the title policy and there is no exception on the title policy for public beach areas in Lot, in Mr. Blackshear's parcel.
Okay.
I would also like, if I may, to bring up the fact that I was in a meeting with Mr. Blackshear, Mr. Cottle, and three members of the Sunrise Beach Association. And that, that meeting was held on August the 7th and in an attempt to understand what they wanted us to do with the property so that we could resolve this matter. And there were a variety of different things that were mentioned at that meeting and we thought they were actually going to respond to us and give us something in writing about what their demands were, in that there have been, and there are letters in the record here saying that they want us to abide by their architectural, you know, review boards and they want us to pay for, you know, maintenance of the roads and, you know, there are a lot of different people there that have a lot of different concerns and we don't know how to respond to the multiple issues that seem to be thrown at us by the different lot owners there at Sunrise. And I have never seen an easement that was granted with no conditions be called upon to be addressed in any way that Mr. Cottle is suggesting. Now, I'm not, you know, I was a lawyer and I don't really, I don't practice any longer, but I have been dealing with real property records for 30 years and I have not seen a blanket easement given in three different instruments that was ever construed or legally was able to be construed any other way than what it was.
Thank you.
May I respond briefly just to a couple of things? I certainly was not under the impression that you all were waiting to hear anything from us, I thought it was the other way around, that after that meeting, you were going to contact us. I'm pretty sure that's the way we left it, but I'm sorry if there was a misunderstanding. There is no one else using the beach, the streets of Sunrise Beach other than owners within the subdivision and the owner of the subject property. There aren't any other people crossing through these streets to get to their property. This is the only situation where a non-subdivision owner has a right to use the streets. In terms of the overburdening of the easement, I've included a case in the material that I, I'm putting in the record, it's the case of Terrell v. Coe. It's somewhat similar to this where you have a person wanting to go through the streets of a subdivision to develop property that you can't get to any other way and the court talks about the issue of overburdening the easement, of using the easement to a greater extent than was initially contemplated. That is certainly a principle of law, that's in effect in Florida and the case will explain it better than I can, but basically, the scope of the easement is determined as of the time it was granted based on the intent. You can't just increase it, double it, increase it possibly tenfold, that's a problem. We would ask that you deny the reclassification at this time, give us more time to try to work out.
Well, you're making an assumption right now that there is going to be an impact when you don't really know.
Well, they have, we don't know because they haven't told us.
I understand that.
They don't know either.
We don't know either. We're sitting here, based upon a land use change is all we're supposed to be addressing. The easement thing, as far as I can tell, no, we don't have a dog in that hunt.
No, sir, but it does, the increased use does directly impact the subdivision.
Understand that.
And the burden is on them to show that it will be, that it'll be compatible with the current use of those streets.
Are there any other, anyone else like to speak?
Mr. Chairman, as I understand it, the applicant has a right to rebuttal after Mr. Cottle's, I know we had a little bit of rebuttal ahead of time, but I think it'd be appropriate to let Mr. Burgess, if he has any rebuttal to present.
I'll attempt to keep it brief. The two comments that were brought up by Mr. Cottle outside of the access were, one, the demonstrated need for the amendment. If you look in our packet that we hand out as well as our application that we turned into the county, the present application clearly establishes a demonstrated need for the amendment. Policy L-1.3.2 of the Comprehensive Plan states that residential preservation land use category consists of subdivisions existing as of November 7, 1996, approved development projects which are vested or built out, or record-platted subdivisions that have infrastructure in place and are substantially built out. We meet none of those three requirements. Therefore, residential preservation is not an appropriate category for this property. There is a need, a demonstrated need, to change it to an appropriate category. Low-density residential is a, in our opinion, a reasonable, logical choice. We aren't asking for a high intensity, as a matter of fact, it's the next step up in intensity from residential preservation that is, that could be applied to this property in our opinion. I appreciate your time. If anybody had any other questions with regard to the access, we're prepared to answer, but I honestly believe that it's not a matter for this board. We have met, we actually delayed coming to this board for 90 days at the request of Sunrise Beach and that's what prompted those meetings and we have spent 90 days in delay to try to resolve this matter. And I believe it will continue, Mr. Blackshear is a reasonable man. We fortunately have the option, I think, at the end of the day, this will end up being two lots, one access through the subdivision, one access through Shellseekers. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve.
I have a second.
I'll second it. It's point of discussion too, after the motion's made. I just, I don't see how we legally could deny this based on how it's been presented. It's three more lots, it's limited by the dunes, it looks like that the coastal dune line is way up into the lot, so they're going to be restricted on what they can build anyway. And the style of homes that's going in on the beach these days is very upscale and so I just, I don't see, I don't see that we can, we have a reason to deny it.
Well, I concur with our council's guidance that the remedy for them would be if it becomes burdensome taking to court, so I would agree with Commissioner Meadows.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, that moves us to number five on the agenda, which is the William Quirk Small-Scale Amendment. I'll ask Brian Underwood to come up and give a brief presentation from staff.
Brian Underwood, Planning and Development Services. This is the project number 13-00600001, small-scale amendment number 2013-001. The applicant is William Quirk. The current future land use category of the parcel is residential preservation. The requested amendment is neighborhood infill. Acreage is plus or minus .5 acres. Parcel number is 12-3S-20-34,000-001-0016. Property is located approximately 550 feet west of the intersection of South CR 83 and Sky High Dune Drive, on the south side of Sky High Dune Drive, approximately one-fourth mile north of CR 38. Findings, the proposed amendment of the adopted future land use map from residential preservation to neighborhood infill is consistent with the Walton County Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code. The density allowances for neighborhood infill are stated in Comp Plan Policy L-1.3.3 (C) as follows. This land use category allows densities ranging from two dwelling units per acre up to eight dwelling units per acre, subject to Section E. Section E 2 states that the determination of density appropriate for a neighborhood infill project shall be based upon a showing of the project's place within the existing neighborhood being infilled. Walton County Comprehensive, or excuse me, Walton County Land Development Code, Section 2.01.03L3B, Section IIIII, states the following regarding neighborhood infill. The density and intensity of the proposed development must be compatible with the surrounding densities and intensities and must be supported by compatibility analysis. The purposes of this compatibility analysis, surrounding neighborhoods shall be construed as the subdivisions or other developments within one-quarter mile of the infill parcel, with the strongest consideration given to those subdivisions or other developments that are adjacent to the infill parcel. The Walton County Property Appraisers data shows duplex units located adjacent to the subject property to the southwest and to the east. We have, staff has received several public comments regarding the proposed amendment. These written comments are included as exhibits to the staff report and requested action at this time, a motion to recommend approval or denial of the request for adoption of an ordinance amending the Walton County Comprehensive Plan, future land use map designation of the .5 plus or minus acres from residential preservation to neighborhood infill.
I do have a question. Per the Land Development Code, under infill projects, does infill allow non-residential development as well?
It does, subject to approval as a major development.
Okay, and is that infill, non-residential, would that be, would that be compatible with the surround, with, if it's dropped in the middle of a neighborhood?
That would probably not be supported as compatible, but it would be subject to presentation of the compatibility analysis by the owner and subject to-
Isn't that, isn't that what we're doing today, is the land use would have to show, the land use compatibility analysis would have- the land use compatibility analysis would have to show that neighborhood infill, which includes non-residential, which is basically neighborhood commercial, this would, this would have to show that that's acceptable and slap-dab in the middle of a platted subdivision neighborhood? So in planning, you're saying that that is compatible?
You're correct, Commissioner, and we're reviewing this in the context of a proposed residential use only.
You can't, you're not supposed to do that because the, the, the land use includes a non-residential component. I mean, you have to look at it like you could have a, you know, we could have another situation on our hands.
In this particular case, now, Matt Carpenter for the Planning Department, non-residential could only be allowed as a conditional use approved by this board.
Right, yeah.
And we do have other provisions of the Land Development Code that prevent non-residential uses, such as what I think you're describing on interior subdivision streets. So that would be another strike against a non-resident, a potential non-residential use.
Yeah, you're, it's, you're not speaking in the microphone, Mac, yeah.
Non-residential uses in infill land use category are conditional uses approved by the Board of County Commissioners through a major development order process. We have other provisions of the Land Development Code that prevent these non-residential uses from being approved on interior subdivision streets.
Is, is there other infill land use adjacent to this?
No, ma'am, I believe the surrounding area is all residential preservation.
Isn't that one of the requirements, is that you have like-kind surrounding to, to put infill in, instead of just?
Well, the primary use of infill is residential.
Well, I understand that, but the, one of the requirements of infill is that it is compatible and fits into the surrounding area, and if the surrounding area is all RP, it seems to me that, you know, that's, it's a, it would be a spot, well, we used to call them spot zonings, but it would be a spot land use. And it would start a precedent that would, could actually turn the neighborhood from a single-family residential into something else, and I don't think that that's our intent. But I, I, yeah, I don't, I don't understand the, I guess, the staff's recommendation that, that it's compatible with the surrounding area because it's, allows a higher density than the surrounding area. So, you know, RP is what, one per, one house per lot?
One dwelling per platted lot.
One dwelling per platted lot. This is a platted lot, and they want to get two dwellings on it, correct?
Actually, this is not a platted lot.
Okay.
This is a lot of record.
A lot of record.
That is excluded from the plat that surrounds it on three, or two different plats that surround it on three sides.
Okay.
It's a half an acre, basically.
So how did it get left out of the plat?
Developer choice.
Okay.
Why would he do that?
Thank you, thank you.
Why would he do that? I mean, why would one lot in this whole subdivision be left out?
Well, and to give you a similar example, in the plat that's immediately south of this, there are several lots that are excluded from the covenants and restrictions because those lots had already been sold by the time the covenants and restrictions were imposed on the subdivision. But just like the last land use change request we had, the developer excluded his own property from the part he was subdividing. Future development ideas?
But he, but he's.
Confusion for us later on in time.
He's, he's, he's sold it, he sold it off since then. I mean, it's been a long time.
God, it is.
So it's not like he lives next door like the other one, or has a property surrounding it and those things.
He lives in Vermont, Virginia.
You know, it's not like the, yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you. I'd like to hear the applicant.
Good morning, still, I think, Commissioners?
No, you way past that.
Eh? Wow, sorry about that. Good afternoon. David Kramer for the applicant, Mr. William Quirk. He flew in from Vermont so he could show you his face and tell you his long-term intent with the property and why he's owned it so long and why we're here. Give you a brief recap on the history of the lot and the application process. Mr. Quirk called the county to determine if he could do with his unplatted lot just what his neighbor could do, put a duplex on it, which borders him on the side. He was told he could not. He said, "Well, why not?" And he said, "Well, your lot was incorrectly put into RP even though it was, because it looked like a duck, although it didn't quack like one." So we went, we personally had a meeting with the Planning Director and the Planning Manager, and asked them what would be the appropriate land use to fix this mistake the county made in 1996. And given that it was an unplatted lot, developed on three sides, it met the exact definition for infill, they recommended infill. We do it, we asked county Planning Director and Planning Manager at that time if the county would sponsor that amendment. They said, "No, thank you," knowing that we would run into similar issues like this. However, the issue on commercial is moot, also by the reasons Mac and Mr. Underwood also spoke to you about. In addition to that, because of your concerns in June when we met with you, Mr. Quirk has executed a deed, which I have here, to give to the county attorney and copies for all of you, that further will restrict this lot from any commercial use. That you can record at your convenience, or we will record at Mr. Quirk's expense, he has no problem with that, to further ensure. What it basically outlines to you is that there will be no, all commercial activity is prohibited on the lot, except for long-term and short-term residential rental purposes. His intent for the property is undecided currently at this time, whether it will either be just a straight lot split, or whether it will be a duplex like border his lot. His particular lot is a half an acre, plus or minus inside. The exact dimensions, which I think I quoted you before, were .490756 of an acre. And we couldn't get the Planning Director at that time, for planning purposes, to call that .49076 a half acre for planning purposes. So we couldn't go with low-density residential, as the last applicant did. We wanted to, but because he couldn't make that call, or wouldn't, didn't feel comfortable making that call, the exact definition of what this fit into in the land use categories was infill, and so we were going with that. And we're trying to ally any fears of, although it's never been his intent or not, intent, just to do whatever we can to subjugate that. If there are any other questions of myself or Mr. Quirk, he can tell you what he wants, I'm happy to answer them or ask Mr. Quirk to do so.
Is this legal to me?
Well, if he wants it to be legal, yes, sir. I mean, if he, if he is representing to the commission under oath that he intends by this instrument never to place commercial use except for short and long-term residential uses, then, yes, sir, it's binding and legal on him. My only question is whether it would run with the land and be binding and legal upon any successful purchase.
That's my, that's my next question.
I don't, to tell you the truth, off the top of my head, do not know the answer to that right now.
Wouldn't that have to be stated in here, that it's binding with the property?
It would be better in terms of a conservation type of, it's not a conservation easement, but something along those lines, yes, ma'am.
I'd have no problem doing that, but I'm in the courthouse. We can record it.
Yeah, I'm happy to meet with Mr. Davis and get language that would be acceptable to the commission to put in there to further restrict the property.
Can't.
Add in the item.
We can't add, just so we're clear, we cannot add conditions to land use changes. In other words, the land use change either goes through or doesn't go through. We can't say, "Well, grant the land use change, but he can't use commercial on there." That, that's prohibited, so.
Well, we're not asking you to do it with any exceptions, we're just offering to do it with exceptions for, for your, for your benefit and for the benefit of the neighbors and anybody else that has any conditional worries about it. Because it's not his intent.
But legally, we can.
It's the only thing we can do. We can't do low-density residential.
You can always sell, you know, we may not be working with him, we may be working with somebody else, you know, so it, it really is not the person, it's not personal, it's...
Regardless of that point, it's offered as an extra because there are built-in safeguards already. I mean, to do infill requires a major development for your approval, and you know you wouldn't, it's, it's not compatible with that location inside a neighborhood. Additionally, like Mac said, it's on an interior lot, so it can't be developed commercially. I mean, just period, point blank. I mean, the code already says it can't. So, I mean, it's, it can't be.
That is actually a correct representation of the code. It does say, I would have a hard time understanding how we could possibly get to a major development request for commercial here, and it passed because the code's pretty clear, you can't have commercial in this particular situation.
I've, I've seen those, I've seen that done.
I said, "I couldn't imagine."
I know, you can't, you can't imagine it, but, but, you know, it does happen, and it's, it does happen. So my, my, my thought is protecting the neighborhood as a single-family residential neighborhood with, because the guy next door did it, doesn't mean that, you know, it's...
Doesn't make it right.
It doesn't make it right, and...
It's the incorrect land use category, that's why we're changing it. It does not meet the land use category that it's titled. It's supposed to be a platted lot in a platted subdivision, and it's not a platted lot. So it's in, it's a mistake that was made by the county, and all we're trying to do is correct it to exactly what it, the code calls for, infill lot surrounded on three sides by a development. I mean, it's, it's just what it is. I can't make it any clearer than that.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Davis?
It's your call, not mine.
My name's Buzz Livingston, George Livingston. I live on Sky High Dune Drive. I want to thank you all for your time, and I also want to thank the applicant for making that, that offer. There's nothing stopping him from building the house with the land use change, the land use designation that we have right now. And my issue as a, as a homeowner in that neighborhood is that neighborhood infill is gonna, is, there are other, there are other unplatted lots in that subdivision that could be, somebody could come along and say, "Well, we want to make, you made this one change for this particular, in this instance, we can make a change for another, we could do this again." Ms. Harris, you know, she said something about, earlier today, and did it a lot more forcefully than I can, was that, you know, it's important to look at the, you know, the impact of your decisions, you know, down the road. You know, there, there, there's several, we could be setting a dangerous precedent for a subdivision that's completely residential preservation. And like I said, just to reiterate, there are some existing lots in that subdivision that are not platted, that somebody else could come and ask for, to be changed to neighborhood infill, which is a very broad category. I appreciate the applicant's comments and the suggestions that he's making. I'm not an attorney, but you can't make a land use change, you know, conditional, you know, contingent on some future action. And that I would ask that at this point in time, that y'all take that into consideration. And again, there's nothing in the, in, in the, as it's, as the, as it's zoned right now, not zoned, but the land use category, he can build the home that he wants to build right there. And neighborhood infill is that, you know, we're setting a dangerous precedent, and I really don't know if it's really, if he wants to, you know, if he wants to build something there, then of course he can. Anything else?
Well, and also too, you can, you can build a house with a carriage house, you know, and that's, that to me is, would be much easier than trying to get a land use amendment if you want two houses.
Yes, ma'am, but you couldn't sell that carriage house separately, and you couldn't rent it separately, according to provisions of the Land Development Code presently.
Well, then there's an awful lot of people in the county.
Unless you're in places like Watercolor or Alice Beach, where they specifically ask for that deviation at part of their PUD.
Yeah.
But you're exactly right, we don't have any rental police.
Mac.
Yeah, we don't. And we have a lot of houses that build, if you look at them, they, you know, so that, that hadn't necessarily, I mean, we should follow it, but that hasn't necessarily been...
But to speak to the compatibility question about non-residential use, and I'm reading from chapter two of the Land Development Code, and this speaks to compatibility with the existing neighborhoods as part of any proposal for development within a neighborhood planning area, which neighborhood infill still is considered part of that hierarchy. Following the specific criteria which should be used by an applicant, where applicable, establish presumption of compatibility as, is as follows. No new commercial or workplace uses shall be established within a 250-foot buffer around areas which meets the definition of residential preservation. This is completely surrounded by residential preservation, so this alone would prohibit any commercial or workplace uses from being allowed on that particular lot with the change to neighborhood infill.
Mac, I have a question. How many of the lots on either side of the unplatted subdivision, or unplatted lot have multifamily uses on them?
There are several lots in that neighborhood that are allowed a duplex.
Okay.
They're originally part of the original covenants and restrictions for this particular neighborhood, although those covenants don't apply to this particular parcel.
Okay.
There's a duplex immediately to the right that has been subdivided with a lot split.
But that's really the only one, if you look across the street to the two lots that looked like they were unplatted, they both have, you know, single-family homes on them, and so do the rest of the, rest of the lot. So it's, you know, it would be an anomaly, would be extending what's already happened there, and I, I guess they let them split that lot and put two, a duplex on it, but it would be an anomaly, a unique...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to address Mr. Davis's question directly, since I happen to know the facts. It is, the property is bordered, literally contingent and adjacent to three other duplexes, and within the 300-feet notice area of my letter, there are a total of, one, two, three, four, five, six duplexes within the 300-foot radius of this property.
Yes, brief.
Those duplexes that Mr. Kramer is referencing are in the second phase of Rolling Dunes, which is just south of that, just south of Phase Three. You'll notice on your map that all those lots are much larger, and they're, and they're not the same as, those are, there are no duplexes, with the exception for the one that has that lot split, that quirky lot split on Sky High Dune Drive.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Janine Brennan-Williams, and I too live on Sky High Dune Drive. This lot that is under discussion is in Phase Three of the Rolling Dune subdivisions. As Mr. Livingston has already asserted, there is only one duplex adjacent to it. The road in this subdivision is not county-maintained nor owned. The road is in terrible shape. A density problem exists, and I don't believe that there is ample room of, of quality road where these, anyone could park if you put in other duplexes in this area. I did send you emails that voiced my concern. I also sent you pictures of every house on Sky High Dune Drive, so that you could see the type of neighborhood that we are. My main concern, which is perhaps aligned, aligned with what was brought to you by the Planning Committee, is that we don't know what will happen down the road if this is zoned residential infill. And there is only one way into this lot, and it is off of Sky High Dune Drive, and there is no place else to park cars should the, you approve this and the density go up. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I, you know, I even have an old picture. I've owned the property for many, many years, and you can see, it does just only include this. Here is the lot under, I think we have all that. This is not maybe as big as this.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Yes, sir, Mr. Kramer?
Just rebut for a moment. This property is not in Rolling Dunes subdivisions Phase Two or Phase Three. It is on the same road frontage that the Phase Three lots are on. It also has more than one access. You can access this lot in a circle through Rolling Dunes, so it's not just by Sky High Dune Drive. Dunes, so it's not just by Sky High Dune Drive as a responsibility. And in response to Mr. Livingston, got a little case of pot calling a kettle black. For your review and submission, I'm going to bring you a printed-out piece of, that I got off the Internet, and an article from Saturday's paper, both referring to Mr. Livingston's business, which he runs on Sky High Dune Drive. Not only is Mr. Livingston one of those homeowners in this new age, not that I begrudge him his use of the business, I do begrudge him his use of saying that he objects to commercial uses when he's doing the same thing. Not only he preeminently says he's the only one in North America or in America that's on Blue Mountain Beach, his website also says that he does this. So I took the liberty to check the website and then do also with the 60 days I had as a recommendation with this board for other commercial uses that happen to be existing in there. There are four businesses advertising on the Internet that have Sky High Dune Drive addresses. There are also two others that don't advertise that have businesses in there. I'm not looking to blow anybody's cover or put anything out, it's just that, if there's going to be businesses, this is a new age. The day that these were done in the 90s, businesses were thought to be brick and mortar. Businesses aren't brick and mortar anymore, they're cottage industries. Yes, Mr. Livingston is required to have a home occupation license, which I checked with the county. He does not have. So it's a code enforcement issue. But I just, you know, when people live in glass houses, start throwing stones, it just upsets me. So, I mean, I'm really, I'm not here to grind an ax for him, it's just that, you know, when you get up here and you call out somebody that's just looking to build a couple of houses and, you know-
And I'm sorry, I should have done this at the beginning. I assume that since we're having the hearing, there's no objections to the notice, and I forgot to do that. So we'd make the notices, exhibit one. Exhibit two would be the staff report, which was read. Mr. Kramer, do you want this to be part of the record?
Yes, please.
Okay, so why don't we make both pages composite exhibit three from the applicant?
Okay, and let me, let me take up for Mr. Livingston and everybody else who operates out of their home, okay, has a computer and a phone.
I agree with that. I mean, it's a new age we're in. I'm not complaining about him doing it, I'm complaining about him complaining about commercial businesses.
He has a right to-
Dave, let the Commissioner speak, you interrupted her.
He has a right, he has a right to stand up and complain about whatever he wants, just as you do, just as everybody else does. So for you to attack him personally-
Oh, no.
For you to attack him personally and his, and bring out news articles and all that, I think that's a bit disingenuous.
This is not, I'd have to disagree.
So, I think, well, let me finish. So I think the fact that somebody operates a business out of their home is neither here nor there. We're talking about a land use change that's going to impact this whole neighborhood, Phase Three, these people live in single-family homes, we're talking about an impact on this neighborhood. I wouldn't want to live next door to an infill. I don't know who else would not, but I wouldn't let, like if an infill came in and shoehorned one in next to my house on a single-family lot. If the lot was bigger, it might make more sense, but it's, it's, it's just not compatible with what's going on in that neighborhood, and it would set a bad press, it would set a negative impression.
It is exactly compatible.
It would, excuse me, mister, excuse me, Mr. Kramer, I'm still talking.
Let the Commissioner finish.
And, you know, if we want to talk about conflicts of interest and other things, if we want to attack each other, the fact that you represented yourself on the Planning Commission and, or on the Planning Commissioner-
Not for this, I didn't.
Is a, is a problem, and-
I stepped down for this. I didn't have anything to do with this.
But you're, it's still a conflict of interest. You presented your own project to a board that you sit on.
So?
It's a, that's a huge conflict of interest, yes, it is.
I signed all the forms, I made all disclosures that require you are mistaken, Commissioner.
It's a huge conflict, no, it's a huge conflict of interest, it being like me representing a developer and then stepping down. What do you think my fellow Commissioners are going to do? They're going to vote, they're going to, they're going to think about what they vote before they vote for it, but they're going to think about the consequences or the positives and the negatives. They're not going to look at it as a, it's human nature. So, I think that this is incompatible with the neighborhood, sets a bad precedent, it sets a increase in the density in this area, and I just, I think it's, I think that he can, he can use his property and build a single-family home.
Okay, Mr. Kramer?
She's finished?
Yes, sir.
Well, I think it's totally compatible. It agrees, I agree with the staff recommendation that it's compatible. It's the land use category that it's supposed to be, it's incorrect. Agree with the unanimous decision of the Planning Commission, and also agree with the recommendations that I got from the Planning Manager and the Planning Director regarding it. So, and take exception to your comments that I can't divorce myself from my decisions when I don't have a financial benefit in the project. So that's what I did, I divorced myself, just like the law requires, signed the proper forms, and I take personal exception to what you allude, madam.
Well, you can take all the exception you want, but the perception is it's a huge conflict of interest.
Not to prolong your meeting, however, I would like to see on the plat where there is entrance and exit to this lot from Phase Two behind the lot. Does anyone have a picture?
No, I think he was talking about that you could drive down Gulf, you drive and drive up the other one and-
Or houses and lots, can, is there an access there?
No, 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 I think he was just talking about that you don't have to come down Sky Dune. You could actually come up Gulf Drive, take a right on another road, and then take a right on Sky Dune.
But to get into the lot, there is no other way?
No, no.
Is that something that we're all agreed on?
Yeah, there's no other-
I misunderstood, Mr. Kramer.
Yes, ma'am, it only fronts on one street.
It only fronts on that street. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? What's the board wish?
I'll make a motion that we deny this request based on the fact that it is incompatible with the RP surrounding neighborhood, surrounding land use.
I have a second.
I'll second.
Any other questions? We have a motion, we have a second, motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Nay.
But did y'all vote, did you vote?
Voted nay.
Nay, nay?
Nay.
Okay.
Madam Quirk, you got?
Somebody's got to make a motion to, or, somebody's got to make a motion to approve it or it dies.
Yeah.
You just let it die?
The motion to deny failed.
Motion to deny.
Motion to deny failed, so-
It has not been approved yet.
It is not, yeah, it's not over.
You've got to have a motion to approve it.
I guess the corollary would be motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries.
Down number eight, I'm sorry, to number six on the agenda.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Sorry. Picks on the agenda, which is our last item. It's the South Walton Fire District's small-scale amendment.
Wayne, I'm sorry, please let me interrupt you again. I'm going to ask that this last, the deed that was presented be made an exhibit to the last hearing, and I'm sorry I didn't do it during the course of the hearing, but we need to make it exhibit from the applicant, whatever number one. Thank you.
Going to be long, or is this going to be quick?
I think it'll be quick. I hope so.
About to pass out.
Picks on the agenda, the South Walton Fire District's-